Call to order the New Kent County Board of Supervisors, May 25th, 2022. Meeting to order. Ms. Watkins, will you call the roll?
Mr. Evelyn?
Here.
Mr. Tiller?
Here.
Ms. Page?
Here.
Mr. Steers?
Here.
And Mr. Lockwood?
Here.
Before we get started this morning, will y'all stand with me in a moment of silence? Please pray for and remember the nineteen young children and two school teachers that lost their lives in the tragic school shooting that took place in Uvalde, Texas. Please pray for their families to give them the strength to heal as they go through this unimaginable situation. Please pray for all the children who were in that elementary school and witnessed losing their friends and teachers yesterday, that they will be able to get the support and counseling they need to heal. Help this tight-knit community heal and come together to support each other in the coming weeks and years. Finally, please pray for the first responders who put their lives on the line to save and protect the children, teachers, and staff from this evil person who committed this tragic and unthinkable attack. Amen. Welcome, welcome everyone this morning. First item, New Kent County Employee Compensation and Classification Study presentation. I'll turn it over to Mr. Hathaway.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will set up the Zoom presentation. It'll only take about a minute.
Enter your meeting ID followed by pound. You entered five eight five three five three. This meeting ID does not exist. Please re-enter your meeting ID followed by pound. You have not entered any numbers. Please re-enter your meeting ID followed by pound. Goodbye. Welcome to Zoom. Enter your meeting ID followed by pound. Enter your participant ID followed by pound. Otherwise, just press pound to continue. Please enter the meeting password followed by pound. You have not entered any numbers. Please... You are in the meeting now. There are two participants in the meeting. You have been added to the waiting room. You cannot talk or listen until the host admits you to the meeting.
If you're talking to me, I can barely hear you.
Good morning, Dr. McGrath. Can you hear me?
I can hear you now. Yeah.
All right. We are ready to discard.
So would you like me to start the presentation or get started on your end?
You can start it on your end, and I will allow you to share your screen.
Thank you. All right, let's give it a try. There we go. All right. Good morning, everybody. How are we all doing this morning?
Good, good morning.
Okay. Well, good morning. I'm Dr. Victoria McGrath. I'm CEO of McGrath Human Resources Group, and we've been working with the county over the past several months to help you with a compensation plan. Thank you very much for the opportunity to meet with you this morning and go over what we've done. Just so that you know who you're talking to, as I said, I'm Dr. Victoria McGrath. Our firm was established in the year 2000, so therefore this year we celebrated our 22nd anniversary in business. It's kind of hard to believe when I say that. We've been around for 22 years. Currently, we have a little bit over 450 clients in 42 different states, including obviously the state of Virginia. There are two sides to the business. McGrath Consulting Group, Inc. is the parent company, and that does public safety consulting, so we work with police, fire, EMS, and dispatch departments. And then obviously, the human resources side has a significant role to play in the public safety side. So what happened in 2012, we broke out to McGrath Human Resources Group because everybody thought we only did police, fire, EMS, and dispatch. And obviously, we look at the entire organization from the county level on down, and our side specializes in compensation studies, job descriptions, performance management, all that fun stuff that most of the people in the room dread, and there's a few of us that actually kind of salivate over. So what we wanted to do when we were hired to work with the county was to confirm the county's compensation philosophy. Where do you want to be within the market? By doing that, we obtained external market data for a number of benchmark positions, and we'll go over what that data showed us. We obviously spent a lot of time understanding New Kent positions and spent time with department directors going over what those duties and responsibilities, et cetera, are. We tried to identify some career progression, so if you look at the salary schedule, you're going to see some Level 1, 2, 3s, or a level in a senior, and specific criteria had to be attached to those in order to have those levels. And then we integrated all that to make a recommendation for what your compensation schedule should look like going forward. We've also provided human resources, a plan for ongoing maintenance of that system, because now that you've spent the money to create a system, if you maintain it on a regular basis, you won't have to have the chunk of dollars that you need in order to implement it again. So how did we do this? As I said before, we had interviews with county administration, human resources, department heads and managers. We reviewed data from your current compensation system, your current job descriptions, your current policies. Employees were asked to complete something called a position questionnaire. The position questionnaire is about a 16-page document that supplements and adds to a job description, and so it gives us significantly more information than what a job description does. It actually takes a job and evaluates it into 13 different competencies. Points are assigned to those competencies, and therefore we can compare and contrast positions that may not necessarily, when you look at, well, how can you do an equipment operator and an administrative assistant, and they're in the same pay grade, well, we look at what their points are. An administrative assistant's going to get some higher points in some areas where the equipment operator will not, and vice versa. So that is one of four areas that we look at in placing a position or evaluating a position. We did solicit compensation data from 17 different public organizations to collect their minimum, midpoint, and maximum. We also tried to collect for most of those organizations what employees are actually making. To me, that's a truer reflection of what's going on in the market than what a salary schedule is, because a salary schedule sometimes is not necessarily utilized in every organization. And so if I'm looking at, again, I'll pick on administrative assistants, I'm going to see what administrative assistants are actually making, and then compare that to your employees. It may be hard to read. I'm not sure the lighting in your area, but these are all the organizations that we selected and collected information on. This list was approved by the county prior to us going out and getting that information. So, one of the things that we need to do is to look at your compensation history. And we've got some issues here that we're going to have to deal with going forward, is that there have been minimal adjustments to the salary schedule itself. You have adjusted them when minimum wage has increases, but that structure itself really hasn't had much of a chance to move. And without moving it on a consistent basis, that schedule starts to fall out of market. We started seeing even prior to COVID, even prior to 2021, we were starting to feel the pinch of a labor shortage. 2021 with COVID actually exasperated that. And so without that schedule increasing, your salaries have become non-competitive to the market. They're falling behind the market. So out of necessity, the county is not hiring at the minimum rate, because that minimum rate is no longer a competitive salary. The other issue they have is that, you know, employees do receive an adjustment on a regular basis, but the adjustments may not be sufficient to actually move those folks through those salary ranges. And if you have a salary range, the purpose is to have people move through them. A salary range is basically saying, this is the value that we set for this position. We're not going to pay anything less than this, and we're not going to pay anything more than this. But if that salary range is not competitive, and people aren't doing to move that salary range, then you're going to have some issues in the respect of recruitment and turnover. We're going to go look at the market data right now, and when we look at market data, one of the things that we use is something called a comp ratio. A comp ratio basically means that what's the ratio of the county salaries to the external market salaries? And what we would do is we want to get around 50%, because 50% means it's the average market rate. And right now, we've based your system on the average market rate. We are starting to see some municipalities, because they want to have a recruitment retention edge, starting to go above market, but right now we've placed New Kent at the average, which is probably what about 95% of municipal governments do. We usually put a range around that average, however, because if an employee sees that the average market rate is 25,000, and I'm making 24,675, you see, aha, you need to give me more money to get to the average. And so we usually put a 10% range around that. So if you're between 40 and 60%, you're still being paid appropriately. We do look at those in the lower 40%. It's in the acceptable range, but if you don't do something, those folks are most likely going to slip out of the acceptable range. A number of compensation analysts have started talking over the past year, and now we're trying to narrow that range to 5% below the market, because the market is so competitive, it's so fast-moving, that right now, those that we used to say were in the 40% to 4% and are looking at possibly falling out of the market, in a lot of cases are already out of the market based upon how quickly the market is changing. So, let's look at your schedule. So when we compare your starting salary to the average starting salary of similar positions, we basically have 35% of them are below the market. We have another 13% that's one here in yellow, that is basically saying, you know, like I said before, in the old days, I would have said this is in danger of falling out of the market, but most likely these salaries are already out of the market. You do have 65% of your positions that are aligned with the market. So, you know, you do have a number of your starting salaries that are okay, but obviously, we have a number of them that need adjustments and need to be corrected in order to be more competitive. In a salary schedule, the midpoint often represents the average market rate. The average market rate means that an employee should reach that midpoint within three to five years. That means they should reach that average market rate because they are fully capable and competent of doing the job. You have a range before that, before you get to that average market rate, usually considered your hiring range, so that you have some flexibility to hire some folks. You're hiring a minimum salary range. If I have just the minimum skills, education, knowledge for the job, if I have something more to offer or bring to the county because I have some experience or education, I can be hired higher within that range. But usually, that within three to five years, you should reach that market point. So we wanted to determine whether or not your midpoint actually represented the average market rate. And it really doesn't. 53% of those positions are not at the average market rate. Again, we have another 9% that's going to bring us to almost 60% of your positions are under the market. So that midpoint of your salary range does not represent the average market rate. So it's unknown where that is, and it's unknown how long it takes an employee to become market competitive. A truer reflection of how the county is doing in relationship to the market is to look at actually how people are being paid. So again, I'm looking at how people are being paid, so what's the average pay of that similar position within the market? Tenure can play a part of this, because if, obviously, if I'm looking at a brand-new, single-position employee, I'm going to pick on Karen's position. So if we have a single HR director and she's new to the position, I'm comparing her to the average market rate, which means I should see some people on all ends of the spectrum. I should see people in the 30% range, because they're at the lower end of the salary range, but I should also see a number of people on the top end of the range, because they've been with the county for a long time, and they have, you know, been pushed through that salary range. And I'm not seeing that here at all. In fact, 72% of your positions are under the market rate. So what you've been doing on an annual basis to push people through that salary range isn't occurring. It's insufficient enough to get them to a market competitive rate. And even if I've been here a long time, I'm not seeing folks up here. And I'm going to talk about your demographics in a minute. And I really should be seeing more people at the top of that range, just because they've been here for quite some time. One of the things that we heard during this study was that the county has made a special emphasis, and I'm very proud that you have done this, to focus on the lower end of the range versus those in the professional and department head area. And that can have some interesting long-term consequences. And what we did is we actually pulled out of the market data your incumbent, your minimum salaries and your incumbent salaries of department directors, and basically found that 69% of your starting salaries for directors are below the average market minimum, which means if any one of those folks were to leave this organization, your salaries are nowhere near competitive in order to attract and retain some talent in those areas. The same thing with what are they actually making? You know, 85% of your managers right now and directors are below the average market rate, which means they're very marketable. You have some very, very talented people that I've met with, and the question is, why should I stay here if I can go to the next county over, or if I can go across the street and make $2,000 or $3,000 more? So when you look at correcting your compensation system, you have to look at it in its totality. You're right. We have to make sure that the worker bees are getting their sufficient increases, are getting what they need to do, but you also then also have to look at your management level, because this is the group that, you know, developing your strategic direction. This is the one that's guiding you on policy decisions to make. And if you don't have that leadership at the top, then the worker bees, you know, in the middle are going to have the direction, and you're going to have a leaderless type of organization. So this is always a hard conversation to have for elected officials, because they want to make sure that, you know, all employees are taken care of, but it can't be taken care of at the expense of the leadership within your organization. So here's what we've discovered so far, and here's what we have to look at. Your salary structure is very non-competitive. Your market rate is unknown. You have a kind of a two-salary schedule. They overlap, and they're inconsistent, and so we need to clean up that salary schedule. We need to look at recruitment trends. You know, if... Right now, according to NeoGov report, the national applicant volume is down by at least 37%. And this is a 2021 report. I'm sure it's even more significant than it was right now. You know, we've got turnover rates in local government. We have more people leaving government and moving to the private sector, because the private sector is becoming much more competitive. They're reacting to what's going on quicker than government is. In fact, I've just lost almost four or five of my references of my HR directors, because they've all left to move to the private sector for at least $2,000 to $3,000 more than what government's paying. You also need to look at your geography. It's not like you're an island. I mean, you've got, there's a lot of options for workers right now. And I have a client that said that we've got workers right now that want to go after the shiny object. And if the shiny object is the target across the street, they'd rather do that than actually work for here. And so you've got that. You've got, we've heard about, you know, 2021 has been the great resignation, because people have now found that government is too structured, it's too stifling, and we need to get more creative in what we're doing in recruitment. We need to start competing with our pay with the private sector. Usually, in the past, private sector has always had great pay and average benefits, and government has had average pay and great benefits, and now that's no longer the case. Benefits are pretty much the same across the board, and we're no longer competing with the private sector. We've learned over the past two years that people can have flexible work schedules. Now, not everybody can have it. Work from home. I mean, obviously, we can't have a police officer say that I'm going to work from home for two days a week. But we do need to look at more flexible work schedules, because we have a generation that's coming into the workforce that really values work-life balance. And if we're not catering to that work-life balance, you're going to be on the short stick of, if I'm standing on the corner and I can turn left into New Kent, or I can turn right into this organization that's going to give me a flexible schedule, higher pay, why would I come to New Kent? Or why would I stay at New Kent? So we need to start looking at pay as well as some of those other recruitment trends that are coming out at this point in time. Looking at your organization, this is why before I said I should have seen more people's pay at the higher end of the salary schedule. So what we look at is what was the age and years of service within your organization? Actually, your average age within your organization is 46. However, ages 55 and over are carrying your tenure. Right now, your average years of service is seven, and it's really being lifted by these folks that are 50 and over. And I think the part that you really need to concentrate on is that 38% of your population is under the age of 40. We've called this the mobile generation. This is the generation that has no problem whatsoever saying, you know what? If I can make $10 more across the street, I'm going to go across the street. If a group of folks get together and say, hey, let's leave Virginia and go live on a mountain in Tennessee, they're willing to get up and move. They don't have that commitment to an organization. And you've got quite a few folks there. The 40 to 49 folks are what they, you know, typically have been called the Gen Xers. And usually, they've been more stable, but we are finding that the Gen Xers are now becoming much more mobile. So the question becomes, why would I stay here within this organization? And what types of salary, what types of benefits am I going to get that are going to say, yeah, I want to make New Kent, you know, my career? So compensation philosophy. Compensation philosophy means where do you want to be within the market? Do you want to be average market rate? Do you want to be the leader in the market? Or do you want to lag behind? And right now, your philosophy is lagging behind. And when you lag behind, one of the things that happens is turnover. And turnover is costly for an organization. Some turnover is going to happen. Those 55 and older folks are going to be getting to the age where they can retire, and God bless them. They've put a lot of time and energy into this organization, and they deserve to have that ability to retire. But, you know, turnover, when it's not due to that, is something that the organization really needs to look at. Right now, it's estimated that you could take any employee's salary and do one and a half times it, and that's minimally what it's going to cost you as an organization in turnover costs. And if you get into public safety, that's going to be even higher than that, because of all the training that goes into becoming a police officer, becoming a firefighter. And so it's a fiscal drain on your organization when you have excessive turnover. And you do. You really need to look at your turnover rate. Karen's system does not have the ability to track overtime at this point in time, but she went through and found what, who has left the organization in '21 and '22 to date. And right now, you have a 13% turnover rate in 2021. That's high for government. And what's scary about that 13% is 70% of that are people with less than three years of service. You are becoming the training ground. You have attractives of enough salaries to get them in the door, and then you're going to train them, and then they're leaving you, and they're leaving for better. And they're leaving for better money someplace else. And if that's your philosophy, if you want to be the training ground, if you want to have that constant turnover, then you're on the right track. But if you want something different, then we really need to look at our compensation and benefit mix for that. Now, out of that thirteen percent, you have had five employees who left with fifteen or more years of service, which is what we would expect. Those folks have, you know, are retiring and leaving the organization. You're on the same track for this year. In twenty-twenty-one, for four months, you're already at seven percent. So you're more, you know, if this continues, you are going to be a higher turnover rate in twenty-twenty-two than you are, than you were in twenty-twenty-one. And again, out of that number, fifty-seven percent have less than three years of service. So you are definitely getting the, you're not keeping people. You're competitive to get them in the door, but you're doing nothing to keep them and retain them. So why are people leaving so soon? You know, some of it might be other issues than pay. I mean, there's always issues, you know, there might be a supervisor here or there that you might have to be working with, but to have that significant number of people leaving, it's more than just a supervisor here and there. So this is a very high turnover rate for a local entity. So it's something that really needs to be addressed. So what are we going to do about it? Well, from my end at least, we're going to look at looking at a compensation system that has some built-in types of areas to make sure that you go forward. So basically, we've taken your entire pay grade, we've now taken those two pay ranges, and we've combined them into one pay range. It has twenty-three pay grades. What you and employees will see is a minimum, a market rate, and a maximum, excuse me, my coffee hasn't picked in, this morning, there's thirty-five percent from minimum to maximum. But what we've also done is behind the scenes, for HR and administrative purposes, we've actually created a quartile system. There are some benchmark numbers within that system between minimum and market, between market and the maximum, that says, look, you need to start watching how much you're giving employees to move through the salary range, and at certain times of years in the position, they should be hitting those benchmarks. And if they're not, then maybe we need to do a little bit of a market adjustment to some of those salaries to keep those salaries being pushed through that salary range to get to that market rate and to get above that market rate. So in addition to that, something the county has really got to make a commitment for is there needs to be two types of increases each year. I'm going to use January and July, it's easier for me, but every January, that salary schedule needs to lift. Every year, you need to look at what's going on with the economy and how much money do we need to put on that salary schedule in order to keep it competitive with the market? So this is just truly an example, this is not your salary range, but if I was at eleven sixty-six on January first, that salary range has been increased by one and a half percent, I'm going to stay right where I'm at, but I'm going to go to eleven eighty-three. And then in July or January, whenever you want to do it, employees will get their performance evaluation, and they get the percentage that has been designated, either I get it or I don't. And therefore, then in this case, I gave people a two percent performance increase, and then on July or January, I would move to twelve oh seven. You need to have those two elements in order to keep the schedule competitive as well as to keep the employees moving through that salary range. If you don't, then one of those two are going to continually be off, and then you're going to end up spending the type of money that you're spending in order to get it. I call these annual course corrections. And if you make those annual course corrections along the way, it's going to cost you a little bit, but it's not going to cost you the millions of dollars that we're talking about in order to get you where you are, which where you need to be. So, once we have the schedule built, we have to place positions within the salary schedule. We placed positions in based upon four criteria, it's not just one. One is the external market. We had all that data that I shared with you. We also had data that we didn't have positions filled or whatnot. So we had a lot of data that said, okay, a position should be placed into this pay grade because it's around this minimum, it's around this market rate. We then did the position analysis, we did those point factor systems, so, you know, we looked at points, positions that have similar points. We looked at compression. What's the difference between a subordinate and a superior position? Because if I'm going to take the added responsibilities of moving into a lead role or moving into a supervisor role, I at least should get some compensation for that, and I should be making more money than the people that I supervise. And so we took a look at that. And then we also do internal comparability. Are there positions that might be considered similar in a department? They might be cross-trained and things of that nature. So when someone looks at their position in that, you've got to remember, we're looking at the position, we are not looking at the person. So if somebody says, well, hey, I think I should be a higher pay grade because I have a bachelor's degree. My question's going to be, is a bachelor's degree required for the position? If it is, we took that into account. If it's not, great that you have a bachelor's degree, but this position only requires a high school degree. So we're always looking at the position, not the person. All right, now we've got all the positions in, and now I've got to place people onto that system, right? So the way I place people on the position is first, is employees need to be placed to the minimum rate, if they're under it. So if my minimum rate is twelve dollars and I'm making ten dollars, I'm putting that person to twelve dollars. It doesn't matter whether they've been here one year, it doesn't matter if they've been here ten years, they're going to that minimum rate. If I'm already in that, I'm making twelve fifty, well, then I don't need to give you any money because it doesn't cost anything to get them within that salary range. So then the county says, okay, what are we going to do for all those people that are already within the salary range but didn't get anything? And so the county is looking at giving twelve hundred dollars to full-time people, four hundred and seventy-five dollars rate to part-time people. When you shift the schedule as much as we did, and you then just only place people at the minimum, one thing that happens is we cause in-range compression, which means that I'm a longer-tenured employee and I was further up in the range, and now I've slipped down to the lower part of the range because that whole range has shifted. And that's something that has happened in your organization, that's something that you need to look at because now you've got longer-tenured employees that are making almost as much as newer-tenured employees, or in some cases, could be making the same as a brand-new employee. And sometimes that has some real employee morale issues when they say, hey, look, I've been here for ten years, and I'm at the minimum of the salary range, and now you've hired somebody making the same amount of money as I have. So that's an issue that you're going to have to address. It might take you one or two years to do, to make some sort of rule that says, okay, if I have ten years or more experience and I am below the market rate, then I'm going to get an extra percentage increase to push me through that salary range. By doing that, you also then clean out your hiring range because you now have very competitive hiring ranges that you can't use because you've got longer-tenured employees stuck within those ranges, and so you need to move them forward. Unfortunately, because the ranges have had to shift so much, that administration has indicated that you do not have enough funding in order to put everybody to the minimum in the first year. And so Rodney and Karen have worked to place individuals either to the minimum or close to the minimum for the first year, and then hopefully the second year, you will get them to the minimum. I will tell you, by doing this, you are actually going to spend more money than what if you ripped the Band-Aid off and did it right now. Because what's going to happen is now you're going to be hiring people. Look at your turnover rate. You're going to be hiring a lot of people. You have a lot of openings, you have a lot of positions that you're having difficulty filling, and now you're going to have to start those folks lower than the starting salary schedule because you already have your current employees not on that salary schedule. So it's actually going to cost you more in year two, and it's going to actually increase your in-range compression issue. So I understand why you may have to do it. There's only one tie, unless the money tree in the backyard of New Kent has started to blossom, there's only so much money to go around. But keep in mind, by not getting folks to that minimum now, you will actually be spending more money and exacerbating your problem. And if the county doesn't commit to making sure that happens in year two, you're going to get further away from the market. Because again, the market has not slowed down. I know it's going to bust at some point in time. I think we all know it's going to bust at some point in time, but unless your crystal ball on the economy is better than mine, I don't know when that's going to happen. So, you know, you need to start becoming competitive to fill those positions. So, going forward, here's what you need to do if you adopt the system. Number one, annually, you need to adjust that schedule. So whether it's by some predetermined economic indicator, stick to it. Obviously, right now, we are having counties that used to always use CPI, and if our CPI is what, seven, eight percent, you're obviously not, don't have enough to add seven or eight percent to your salary schedule, but you need to have something more competitive than one or one and a half percent to add to that schedule. Then you have, employees have an, until they get that, then they have an annual adjustment based upon performance. I know Karen wants to roll out a pay-for-performance type system. You know, that's something that with training and with whatnot, I, you know, highly recommend. And then you need to have that market adjustment on a regular basis to make sure that people are hitting those benchmarks within those quartiles. And then last but not least, every three to five years, have another market adjustment and take a, it's much, it's a less extensive program than what we just did right now. I'm just finishing run right now for a municipality or me, where we took a look at their salary schedule, we chopped off some steps, we added some steps, and moved a couple of positions to make sure they were market-competitive, and they're done. And if you do all these things on a regular basis, you're not going to have a million-dollar price tag to turn around and try to correct everybody. So with that, I'm going to stop talking now, I'm going to stop sharing my screen, and I will entertain any questions that you may have.
Thank you for your presentation. I'm sure we have a few questions. How many employees does New Kent have?
Full and part-time?
Full-time.
Full-time or part-time?
So we had a turnover of, you said thirteen percent, that's forty-five, fifty people.
Yeah, and Karen can probably could speak to the problem she's having with time to recruit as well. You know, you don't have a flood of applicants coming in the door to choose from, and the time from the position opening until the time the position actually fills, that time gap is actually increasing, and Karen can obviously can speak to the recruitment challenges that she's having with that turnover rate.
So if you just lost payroll, we turned eight people to some payroll, so that's just in the last four days.
If I could ask a question, Karen, are, did we take out, back out, the Parks and Rec seasonal staff in the percentage?
They would, if you follow the two thousand twenty-two numbers, they, they're still in there, a lot of them go season-to-season, she leaves them for one year.
Yeah, because they do work throughout the year.
So there may be a few of those in there, but it's not a whole lot, a lot of them stayed and are coming back. She just hired five more. But some of those numbers, maybe a lot of that, but the eight that just left in the last thirty days are not Parks and Rec.
Let me come up here, Karen.
If I could say something, you know, the thing is, what you've got to remember is that you folks were elected to provide services to the constituents in the communities that you serve. The only way you do that is through purchasing the skills and labor of employees, you know, and so if you're going to have services, the only way you get it done is by the employees that you hire. And you've got some great employees, so, you know, they're not expecting the moon, but they are expecting a competitive wage. And if you don't have those folks, that service level is going to drop, and that service level is going to be problematic. So, you know, it's not that you don't value your employees, but we now just need to align those values with the compensation.
Yeah, I agree, we do have some great employees, and I know, and we're committed to salary studies, that's, you know, so, but that thirteen percent rate, I guess I'd like some more information on that. And I do believe our benefits are something that you didn't bring up, but our insurance goes up every year, and since I've been on the board, we've been covering those increases and not passing it on to our employees. So that is a benefit that you didn't mention there, and I do believe, hold hardly, that the benefits of this county in the private sector are not as good as the public sector for New Kent. There's no question in my mind about that.
And you're right, benefits were not included in the study. I will say this, that the group that you're hiring from, the under forty group, doesn't care about benefits. That's not what's important to them. Someday it will, those of us in the room, I'll understand how important that benefit is. We also know how costly that benefit is, but that's not what they're looking for at this point in time, and show me the money.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
I listened to what was said. I don't know how any government agency can compete against private sector when private sector is based on profits and sales, and government is based on taxpayers' dollars. I think that here, we have great employees at New Kent. I am a supporter of our employees being paid fair wages, I truly am, but at this day and age, I don't care how much we pay people, especially with our younger generation, if they can get three or four dollars more, they're going to move. I mean, it's just like you talked about benefits, and I'm probably the oldest one in the room, so we just worked a job until we could retire and get our retirement benefits. Our younger generation does not care about that. And so for, so some of the things that you said, it just didn't resonate with me because I see too many other surrounding localities, government localities, that are struggling with the same struggle that we have. And so I think as for New Kent, I truly believe that in order to meet the standards that you gave us in this, in your elegant presentation, that we have to look at maybe the other requests, the other non-salary requests that are coming to us during budget time so that we can allot funding for our employees so that we can match the cost of living that is given by the state to other agencies, i.e. our schools, i.e. other agencies that are part of the county. I think that, and I think that should be in the minds of our directors. I know that our requests are based on need, but then maybe our way to handle this is the requests have to be, I don't know, more refined so that we can always keep in our minds what we have to do for the salaries of our employees to fulfill the compression and the hiring wages. Just so you agree with me, I'm good.
And I don't disagree with you, no, you are not going to compete with the private sector. I mean, we, you know, we look at some of the private sector data just to see how far off you are. I get this all the time, especially with IT and attorneys. You know, we have to compete with the private sector. Well, there's no way you're going to compete with the private sector if you look at an IT attorney. I mean, it's just not going to happen. But I think what you need to be concerned about is the comparison of your salaries with other local government entities. So it is not with the private sector. So you're that far off of other local government, and so you need to get more in line with your local government competition. And keep that private sector kind of in the background and kind of watch it, but you're right, you are absolutely right, there's no way that you can have private sector salaries.
Right. Yeah, this study was based on comparing other local governments around, that's what it's supposed to be.
Seventeen other local governments that we selected.
And where's the, where's the recommendation? I mean, we have a lot of information here, I mean, I'm seeing if we've got something else to look at sooner or later.
The recommendation was sent to you by email probably about a week or either last Friday or two weeks ago.
Oh, really?
But I do have copies.
Good.
And the way that the spreadsheet that Mr. Hathaway sent you, it has the current employees, their title, their department, their date of hire, how many years they have, the date and the position, their current salary. And in the middle, it would have her recommendation for just year one. And then to the far right would be Rodney's recommendation based on the money that we have for this. Um, and as you can see, once you guys get that data, we're not going to meet year one amounts. Um, and for the people who she said, um, are at market now or actually above market, uh, Mr. Hathaway put in a twelve hundred dollar increase for full-time, a four hundred and seventy-five dollar increase for part-time. So everybody did get something. Um, and then he started at the lower end and worked his way up. Um, and as Dr. McGrath alluded to earlier, that gets those about ninety, ninety-five percent on the lower end. And as you worked up, some of your directors came short and some of those were only getting about fifty percent of the recommendation. Um, and that's what she was alluding to earlier.
But I think the, the majority of the directors, I think you all met with. And I think what I hear from the majority of the directors is that, you know, they're worried about their employees, you know, trying to, to get them up instead of their, instead of themselves, and that's kind of the directors and employees we have at the county that I know as a board, I can speak on behalf of it, that we all appreciate and proud of.
Would also add that what I just passed out, the total cost of that is roughly one point four million dollars, just a little bit above one point four. Um, and that has been included in the budget that you'll be acting on today. Um, so, yes, the results that you have before you are included in the budget that you'll be acting on today.
Can we just pass that budget today and then, I mean, that money's there.
You can move it around, you can move those recommendations around.
But I think we need to look at these recommendations a little bit, it's there.
I just have one other question. Um, and in the study, when we looked at other localities, are other localities doing performance evaluations? Or they're just doing cost of living? Because I don't think we do performance evaluations.
You know, there, there, there's a number of localities that do, not all of them, but that do cost, uh, oh, well, do performance evaluations. Our focus really for the past several years have been getting people up to the cost of living. And I think once we get to the cost of living, then we can look at performance evaluations. But our primary focus, knowing that we're behind in cost of living, has been to increase.
I just wanted to, I just wanted to know if this was apples to apples to what we're doing. I know that we, uh, we struggle every year to do the cost of living. And, um, and so, um, and I'm just appreciative of our employees just hanging in there with us and, and providing, um, the best service that we can provide and working in a spirit of excellence.
And we do have a performance evaluation system that's been created along with the training, but we were told to hold off. I think it was two years ago. Um, so we, we have it ready to roll out, um, and we could roll it out without the money attached to it until you guys are able to fund the whole cost of living. And but we did, um, survey eleven counties when we did that, the HR department did at the time. And we got their performance evaluation program and we based ours off of what other localities were doing along with what New Kent County had historically done. So we have the program and the forms all ready to go whenever you guys are ready for that.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Hathaway, um, I see that, you know, obviously the total that we're talking about for your recommendations comes about one point four million dollars.
Yeah.
Uh, there's no total for the consultant's recommendation, do you have that number?
Um, well, the consultant's recommendation, I believe it was about one point six eight million dollars. And I'm going from memory there. But you have to do some calculations with that because that doesn't include FICA and taxes and benefits, all of that. Um, and also in some of those recommendations, some of the, those positions are shared with the state, such as the consultant may have calculated a five percent increase for a social services worker. Well, the county only pays about fifteen percent of that cost, so that entire five percent would not bear on us. But the raw numbers from the consultant, I believe, was just under, um,
One, one point six without the taxes.
It was one point six, but it did not include the taxes and did not take into account.
So probably more like two million.
I, I, I projected, um, that yes, that cost is closer to two million, um, yes. Oh, I'm sorry.
Because that cost also did not include any increases for folks within the range either.
Yes.
Right, and the calculation at FICA is about point two five. Um, so you add that to the one point six, so point two five added to that. Um, and that just gets people up to your minimum and then you're going to have a year two recommendation, which takes into account years of service, some of the career ladder issues, compression, in-range compression, things of that nature. Um, so your year two amounts, um, but year one, you would need to take whatever you weren't able to fund year one, add it to your year two. So you're looking at even a larger amount for year two.
Plus you need to consider then the inflationary rate as well, um, because if inflation continues at this rate, you're going to need to adjust those numbers as well.
To, to, to fully fund the, um, consultant's recommendation, um, I anticipate we would need a little over four hundred thousand dollars of additional to, to fully fund.
And that was the number that I had as well.
Yep.
One cent, it's actually almost very, very close to exactly what one cent is. Yeah, additional one cents, yes.
Okay, anybody else? Thank you for your time this morning and your work in New Kent.
Thank you very much, good luck. And, um, uh, if Karen or Rodney could let me know how it goes, I would appreciate it. So thank you very much for the time. If you have any more questions, just reach out, I'll be more than happy to help you.
Good.
And I'd also like to add, at some point, I don't think it's appropriate time now, we'll be asking for a motion to accept the compensation and classification study because that impacts our pay grades, uh, which we would like to implement too. But I, I think it's premature doing that before you even adopt a, a budget. Um, and I'd like you to have time to look through the individual recommendations as well. So we'll be back with that motion.
Okay.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, economic development update on the Autozone project, Mr. Smolnik.
Thank you, members of the board, Matthew Smolnik, Director of Economic Development. Uh, so just real quick, I want to give everybody, um, an update on where we stand on the Autozone project. So, um, bids came in for the, the new industrial road last Wednesday. We're working with a low bidder right now. Uh, subdivision Platte is in, site plan, it, site plan is, uh, nearing, uh, completion. And to my understanding, the building plans have come in, uh, I think it was earlier this week or late last week. So things are moving forward. Uh, really want to, you know, I want to put everybody's, uh, you know, on, on your radar is the, is the groundbreaking ceremony. And we've been holding, uh, weekly meetings with the company and Mullis. Uh, we've got another one today at twelve thirty. Um, you know, this, this really comes, we met with them two weeks ago. What are you all looking for? We kind of got some ideas and I just got to hand it to my staff up at the visitor center. Uh, they, five days had maps and we run a show and all the logistics, you know, worked out. So, uh, big thanks to them. Uh, put this in front of the company, you know, three minutes later, they said, yep, that looks good to us. Uh, so we're still working on some tweaks. We've, uh, so what you see in front of you is just really, uh, the front page is the tentative run of show. Uh, get this on your calendars, June thirtieth, uh, eight AM. Um, this is going to be on the Stub Road north of the Pilot between the sixty-four eastbound on-ramp and then the Pilot itself. You'll see a, a layout of, of, you know, how we're going to work this. Uh, company's going to be bringing in some Spitshine tractor trailers, uh, working to make this a community event. Again, remember, we, you know, part of this, we sold the community, um, to their CEO. So working with them as much as we can, we had a meeting with FIRE and the Sheriff's Department yesterday for public safety, traffic, parking. Um, and then we've got everything, I'm, I'm real proud to say, our, our tent vendor, uh, coffee and two food vendors are all, you know, New Kent businesses here. So we're, we're supporting them, um, you know, getting them some publicity. Uh, I talked to VEDP on Friday. Uh, so this is on the governor's calendar. We're still waiting for a hundred percent confirmation that the governor will be here, but we will be inviting our, our state representatives, um, uh, and local representatives. Uh, so this is going to be a first of its kind, we're real excited to have it here, but I just want to get this date on, on your calendar. Let you know everything is proceeding. Uh, the staff and all the different departments are just working wonderfully together. Um, you know, VDOT's working wonderfully, um, real happy with their partnership, yes, ma'am. Uh, you know, very happy with their partnership, so thank you to VDOT. Um, and, and yeah, that, that's kind of where we stand right now. I'm just, any, any questions that the board may have of me?
Is this six AM?
Well, that's when we're getting there. We're getting there at six AM to, to make sure everything's set up. We'll have the high test coffee from people who call coffee, don't worry.
Anybody have any questions? It's going to be a big day for New Kent.
Yes, sir.
That's why it's going to be a big day. We're going to have to re, we're going to have to, uh, uh, I'm looking at my schedule now, so I'm not so sure I'm going to be there or not. But we can talk about that.
Sounds good.
Anybody else? Huh? Thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
Next item, FY twenty-three tax levies on real and personal property. Ordinance O dash zero eight dash twenty-two, Mr. Hathaway.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Before you, you have the proposed tax rates for next fiscal year. Uh, as we've discussed in previous meetings, um, the recommendation is for a sixty-seven cent per one hundred real estate tax rate. Um, and for the public, we do recognize that that is a one cent above the equalized rate of sixty-six cents. Um, there is a reduction to the motor vehicle tax rate, uh, personal property tax. Uh, the recommendation is for three dollars and ten cents for vehicles, uh, three dollars twenty-five cents for motor homes, RVs and boats, campers and boats. Those are the only changes to the, uh, tax rates that are proposed. Um, you should be pretty familiar with the remaining rates. Oh, I'm sorry, there is one other change too. Um, and that's the Avalorum tax rate in the Bottoms Bridge Service District. Uh, we are proposing to reduce that by five cents, so it will go from ten cents to five cents per one hundred. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Anybody have any questions? I think we've looked at this for four, five, four months now, so. If there's no other questions, concerns, comments, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to adopt ordinance zero dash zero eight dash two-two as presented to impose tax levies on real estate and personal property for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three year, tax year.
Thank you, Ms. Page, Ms. Watkins, we poll the members.
Mr. Tiller?
Aye.
Ms. Page, uh, Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
And Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
Next item, amendment to Appendix A, fees of New Kent County Code, Ordinance O dash zero seven dash twenty-two, Mr. Hathaway.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Each year, our department heads a review of the various fees that are charged by the county um, to ensure that they adequately represent the cost of providing those services and that they're consistent with the market and surrounding areas, um, surrounding localities charges. Um, you do have a list of proposed fee changes, uh, from our airport, a tie-down fee change. Um, and that's for the planes that are visiting our airport that don't particularly need hangar space, um, but stay on our tarmac. Uh, we do charge for that, um, as we do ensure liability, uh, for those planes as they're visiting us. Um, there's a slight fee for a re-inspection fee for building department. Uh, there's also some environmental fees. And I'll say with the environmental fees, uh, those relate to erosion and sediment control and our, um, land disturbance permits. And as I've mentioned in the past, uh, there are some proposed public safety fees, which we really rely on our insurance companies. And these are based on how much we can collect, uh, from providing public safety services. Well, really, how much the insurance companies are willing to pay, uh, for the provisions of, uh, public safety services. So each year, we, we evaluate that.
Thank you, Mr. Hathaway. Comments, concerns? Don't hear any?
Mr. Chair, there's no discussion of concerns. I move to adopt ordinance O dash O seven dash twenty-two as presented, amending Appendix A fees to general government fees of New Kent County Code.
Thank you, Ms. Page, Ms. Watkins, we poll the members.
Ms. Page?
Aye.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
Mr. Tiller?
Aye.
And Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
Next, adoption and appropriation of FY twenty twenty-two, twenty-three Capital Improvement Program, Resolution R dash eighteen dash twenty-two, Mr. Hathaway.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The recommendation are for various capital projects, uh, from various departments totaling three million seven hundred and seventy-nine thousand, two hundred and thirty-nine dollars. Um, we've been over the, the list of projects, they've not changed since my original, um, presentation to you, although as you are, where we did expedite, uh, three of those projects, uh, with recent borrowings we did. That's the animal shelter, fire station four and the historic school renovation.
Thank you, Mr. Hathaway. Any comments? Concerns? Mr. Lockwood?
Mr. Chairman, I move to adopt Resolution R dash eighteen dash twenty-two to adopt and appropriate the New Kent County, Virginia Fiscal Year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three Capital Improvement Plan or Programs.
Thank you, Mr. Lockwood. Ms. Watkins, we poll the members.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
Mr. Tiller?
Aye.
Ms. Page?
Aye.
And Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
Next, adoption and appropriation of FY twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three governmental and schools budgets, Mr. Hathaway.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm passing an updated spreadsheet, uh, an update to what I passed out at our last, uh, work session meeting. There's been some minor changes. Uh, the total operating budget for FY twenty-three is proposed at ninety million, four hundred and fifty-seven thousand, five hundred and forty-four dollars. Um, the changes since our last presentation was, um, the vehicle personal property tax was increased from three dollars, uh, per one hundred to three dollars and ten cents per one hundred. Uh, we did remove one patrol deputy. Uh, we've also removed a school resource officer from the budget. And I'd just like to note with the school resource officer, we're still funding that, that position, but it will be funded either through a grant that we've applied for or through the schools, at least for FY twenty-three, twenty-four. And we potentially could pick up the position in FY twenty-four the following year. Um, those are the only changes since my last presentation to you and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Mr. Hathaway?
Maybe just a point of clarification. We're not reducing one officer currently. We're reducing from four to three additional officers.
That, that's correct. That impacts new positions. And I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, uh, because I had meant to start, um, this discussion off by recognizing our finance team this year that has done an excellent job. And we've been led by Rebecca, who's, this is her first budget, and, um, she's done great. Um, and we always have a department head sit on our budget team too. And this year, it was Suzanne Grable, who also did an excellent job. So, um, well done to, to, to the budget team. Thank you.
Any questions on the budget? If none, I'll entertain a motion.
Um, Mr. Chair, um, before I make the motion, I absolutely would like to, um, I would like to thank the, um, the, um, Finance Committee, uh, County Administrator Assistant County Administrator and our Director, um, for sitting on that. It is a dueling task, and, um, so they spend minimal hours than just, um, the presentation is given from both the capital fund and the, um, and the general fund. I would ask if we had, as we view the, um, salary study, I would ask that, I know we always do a budget of need and we tighten our belts, but I think that as we do our request for FY 24, which is coming soon, that, um, we keep in mind that, um, we want to look out for our staff and, and their salaries. So in our request, I ask that we be mindful of every department and keeping our budget in line so that we can do the best that we can do for, um, our, our own staff here in the county. And with that being said, and if there's no other discussion, I move to adopt Resolution R-18-22 to adopt and appropriate the New Kent County, Virginia Fiscal Year 2022-2023. Okay. And that is the, um, the governmental and school budgets, Resolution 16-22.
Thank you, Ms. Page. Ms. Watkins, poll the members.
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
Mr. Tiller?
Aye.
Ms. Page?
Aye.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
And Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
Next, adoption and appropriations of FY 2022-23 Public Utility Fund Budget, Resolution R-17-22. Hathaway?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Uh, the proposed public utility budget totals $9,635,584. No changes are proposed to water and sewer rates, um, connection and availability fees. Uh, the action that you have before you right now, um, has no changes. Although I do want to note that, um, next month, um, I will be coming before you, uh, requesting a slight change to our meter fees. Um, and this is based on the cost of meters. That's a, a, a cost that we pass on to, to the home buyer, home builder. Um, and due to supply-demand issues, uh, that cost has increased, and we're asking for a 50 cent, a $50 increase to our meter fees, which will be a public hearing next month. So, um, there will be slight increase in our connection fees. And I've already talked about the Bottoms Bridge avalorum, the five cent reduction there, so...
Thank you. Any discussion? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir. Lockwood?
I move to adopt Resolution R-17-22 to adopt and appropriate the New Kent County, Virginia Fiscal Year 2022-2023 Public Utility Fund Budget.
Thank you, Mr. Lockwood. Any discussion? Ms. Watkins, poll the members.
Mr. Tiller?
Aye.
Ms. Page?
Aye.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
And Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
Well, we made it through another one. I'd just like to follow Mr. Hathaway and, uh, Ms. Page. That, thanks to Mr. Hathaway and the finance team. Uh, thanks to all the directors out there. Special thanks to the Commissioner and her office to getting those numbers. I mean, if it wasn't for her, her team, uh, working with the finance team, you know, to make it all happen. So I appreciate the collaboration that you've worked with county staff. I mean, I think this year, we proved we're a team that can work together really well through all departments. So I know we all had to make a few sacrifices, but at the end of the day, I think we have a great budget for the citizens of New Kent County. For one reason, we had no way, again, speak at the, at our public hearing, so I assume that...
Everybody's happy.
There's no, everybody's happy. Sorry, this thing is messing up. But anyway, let's move on to, uh, item eight, adoption and reimbursement resolution, R-19-22.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. By state code, um, we have the ability to reimburse ourselves for potential borrowings. So, um, state code requires that we adopt a resolution stating our intentions of doing that. And what we've done is listed all of our capital projects. So in the event that the county borrows, uh, for a capital project, any expenditure that's, uh, occurred prior to the borrowing, we can reimburse ourselves through that borrowing. But this resolution is, is required, um, in order to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Hathaway. Are there any questions for him? All right. Ms. Tiller?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I move to adopt Resolution R-19-22 declaring the board's intention to reimburse itself from the proceeds of one or more tax exempt financings for certain expenditures made and/or to be made in connection with the capital improvement projects for the county and the county school system.
Thank you, Ms. Tiller. Ms. Watkins, we poll the members.
Ms. Page?
Aye.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
Mr. Tiller?
Aye.
And Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
Any other business? Mr. Lockwood, I got it. All right. I think, Mr. Lockwood, you have a motion going closed session?
Mr. Chairman, I move to go into closed session pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A.29 of the Virginia Code for Discussion of an Award of a Public Contract Involving the Expenditure of Public Funds for Broadband Expansion Services and Discussion of the Terms and Scope of Such Contract. An open session would adversely affect the bargaining position and negotiation strategy of the board. Do you want to do the other two?
Yeah.
Also move to go into closed session pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A.1 of the Virginia Code for Discussion Regarding the Performance and Salary of the Commonwealth Attorney. Also move to go into closed session pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A.1 of the Virginia Code for Discussion Regarding the Performance of Human, of the Human Resource Director.
Thank you, Ms. Lockwood. Ms. Watkins, we poll the members.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
Mr. Tiller?
Aye.
Ms. Page?
Aye.
And Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
Thanks, everyone, for coming out this morning.